Are you ready, um, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Don't forget me.
Oh, thank you. Uh, would you go ahead and take a, a role, a roll call, please?
Yes, Director Brett Echols.
Here.
Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President Michael Schaefer.
Here.
President Robert Uten.
Here. Um. So now's the time for public comments. Um, Arlene, I think you had requested, uh, speaking of public comments.
Yes, I did.
And I see, uh, Cindy Bennerman has her hand raised.
Okay, so I will go first, I guess. Anyway. Uh, this is something that I'm asking to, uh, actually, I'm, I'm sending this to everyone who is, um, let's see, staff as well as the four fellow board members that I have. I feel this is extremely important that I say this now before we start our meeting. And this is on what we received. We have item one and we have item number two. Now, to me, number two, that is our budget, was done so beautiful. I, I, I'm amazed at the cuts that we asked for. We just said, do what you could do. And they did. And I think, you know, they've given up so much for us. I think that's fantastic. But what I'm saying is, number two should be number one, and number one should be number two. Because why would we have CR and R for number one? And talk to them about, you know, their rate adjustment? When we don't even know what our budget is like or what we're approving first, just even in a study session? So I think that we should reverse it and put on first our own budget because we need to be honoring what, you know, we want for our next year and what, what we can afford. And we're not looking at that. We're doing the cart before the horse instead. And that's not fair. So I just, I feel that it should be the other way around, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, let me, let me, I'll, 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 um, um, have that reviewed by the, the other directors. Uh, Cindy, you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. Thank you. No, it's actually, it's Cindy. I'm on Tom's iPad. Sorry about that. Um, yes, I, good morning, everybody. I just wanted to, as a member of the, um, Citizens Advisory Committee, uh, go on record as saying that I have read the staff report, um, regarding the CR and R, uh, request for increase in fees. And I agree with the staff report and the staff, and I want to go on record as saying that I am against this, um, the raise. That's all.
Okay. Uh, Nalani, are, are there any other hands raised that, that you can see?
I see none, sir.
Okay. Um.
I'd like to say something. I'm sorry, I don't know how to raise my hand on my phone. I'm just listening.
Well, uh, uh, maybe we, we can have a session about that, but okay, Sue, I'm sure this is Sue, right?
Yeah, you know it is.
Okay, go ahead.
What would a meeting be like without my two cents? Okay, so, um, I, I have, I have a comment about, um, the rearranging of the agenda.
Okay.
Because the CR and R request, which is about six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, I guess if it's granted at the high end, um, for what they're asking, it's not even included in the budget.
True.
So if you guys put the budget first and then you vote on it, then why would you include more than a half of a million dollar request that now can't even be folded into the budget? Which I hope you don't pass it and you follow staff's recommendation, but that to me seems not like a good idea. I understand, um, our Director Schaefer's, you, you can look at it both ways, and I get that, but I would think you would want to, you know, justify that they deserve it and then talk about the budget and figure out how the heck you're going to find the money, because it's not included in the budget right now. And I don't think it should be. So anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Nalani, are there any other hands raised?
Mr. President?
Brett?
I'm sorry, I have, uh, since, I guess, we're, we're getting into a little bit, uh, a procedural question, uh, because I see both sides of it, Director Schaefer and then, uh, a couple of members of the public. I- i- am I incorrect in assuming or stating that, uh, today, both of these items, this is a study session and we're not actually ratifying the budget today, nor are we voting to deny or approve, uh, a CPI request. We're studying these issues, talking about them, maybe having a little debate, but are we actually taking action on either one of these today?
No, I don't believe we should. Uh, I, I believe our policy has been accepting emergencies to, um, not, not approve items in, uh, in the, uh, study sessions, so you're absolutely, you're correct.
That's my assumption, but I just wanted to make it clear and.
Mr. President, can I clarify, Mr. President?
Sure.
Sure, yes, um, to answer the questions, typically, uh, historically, the board has not taken action on study session agendas, but it is a board meeting, so legally you can take action. And we are requi- the staff is seeking direction from the board to take action on item number one regarding the CR and R, uh, request for, uh, uh, fee adjustment. And then item number two is again for, is for discussion. And then based on your comments and feedback from item number two, we would bring that back on your June, uh, twenty-eighth board meeting for adoption. So item one is, yes, is an action item, item two is not.
And, and Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
So, so with that being said, uh, that's what I figured. Um, I would actually recommend we then go with item number one. If, if we approve or increase or, or deny or increase, if we do approve it, staff's going to need to include that, revise the budget again and bring it back, as Scott said, to June, so I, yeah, I, I think that's the direction we need to go with, looking at number one, and then we could always request staff to revise the budget from that point. That's my opinion.
Okay, do any of you, well, uh, I, I, I think, I think, do any of the other directors have an opinion or need to be in this discussion?
I think Brett makes a good point. We should discuss number one. Then talk about two, increasing the budget if need be.
I'd just like to make one final budget comment, and that is that if we're doing number one now first, I feel that they need to recognize that they have to show us what we have showed them of cuts. They have to show us reasons.
Yeah, no, well, let's, let's just decide on whether we're gonna, not, not discuss the item, let's.
Say that, because, you know, when, when we're carrying on with the budget, then they need to know that they need to go back to the drawing board.
Okay. Um, Mike, Mike, do you have a, any input?
Um. Yeah, you know, I, I guess I, I, I guess I, I appreciate what Director Echols said and Secretary Schaefer, but since the budget, I, I apologize. I, I was assuming that both items were just for study, and I'm glad Scott clarified it, so I would just as soon stick with the agenda as it is.
Okay, and, and I also, so, um, I, I, I think we can work through all the directors' questions and, um, uh, the, the, is it appropriate for Cindy to get to speak again? Cindy, go ahead. Cindy, you're muted.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, actually, Mr. Carroll did a very good job of clarifying it. I just wanted to.
Okay, well, you probably have his vote for staying on the, uh, CAC committee then. Um, well, let's, let, I, I think we can go ahead with the, uh, the item. Item number one is important to item number two. Um, so if there's no other public comment, I'd, Cindy, do you still have your hand raised or? Okay, I, I think we should go on with, uh, w- w- with the item, study session items, you know, as staff has presented. Um, and so let's, let's go into item number one. Um, CR and R Environmental Services request for an annual rate adjustment for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three. Um, do any of the directors have any input on this discussion?
Do you have a presentation? If you want me to give a presentation?
Oh, yeah, okay. I expect that would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning, Board of Directors and, and the public. Uh, according to our contract, CR and R may, may request a two-year fee adjustment. I'm calling it fee, our staff course is a rate, but it's a fee adjustment equal to Consumer Price Index using prior year CPI data to be applied for two future years. The future years in this case would be fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Unlike most solid waste collection contracts where fee adjustments are automatic with no public comments or say from governing bodies, proposed fee adjustments in our solid waste collection contract must be approved by the Board of Directors. On Friday, March thirtieth of this year, CR and R submitted a request for a fee adjustment that equals to a Consumer Price Index of five point six percent, which will increase the district's costs by nearly six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the next two fiscal years. Staff is recommending the board deny CR and R's request for a fee adjustment for two reasons. First one is CNR's performance. Uh, in your staff report is a list of seven issues related to CNR's performance. On May thirteenth, staff met with CR and R to discuss the performance issues identified in the staff report. Staff commends CR and R for recognizing our concerns, and we welcome the suggested improvements outlined in their letter that just, that is attached as Exhibit Eight. However, staff believes the district should take a position of wait and see if CR and R proposed plan comes to fruition before approving any fee adjustments. In fact, after our meeting on May thirteenth, the district did receive a complaint that organic carts were not emptied in the College Park area. So staff once again met with CR and R to discuss communication improvement methods. So after that meeting, staff did demonstrate some communication improvements. For instance, the day after Memorial Day on Tuesday, CR and R informed staff that two drivers were out on sick leave and one truck was down and needed repair work. This information was very helpful for us because now we can inform the public to expect delays in their trash collection services. At first, we were told that a few streets such as South Broadway to East Sixteenth Street, Cambridge Circle, and Broadway to Seventeenth Street were missed and will be collected the following day on Wednesday, uh, on, on Wednesday. I'm sorry, Tuesday, uh, yesterday. No, I'm sorry, Wednesday. Got my days confused. Then, um, then I get a text on Saturday that the trash cans at the mayor's home were not emptied. And yesterday, staff received many voicemail messages about trash cans not being emptied. Nalani, can you do me a favor? Can you, uh, please share that, that word document? Thank you. So on the screen is a list of streets that did not have their mixed waste or organic carts emptied last week. The highlighted streets had their carts emptied, uh, last Monday or yesterday. And we are still trying to confirm if the remaining streets, street names not highlighted have been emptied. In addition, organic carts in the college parks, specifically Princeton, Hanover, and Tulane, were not emptied. And we had three large collection items scheduled last week that were not, that are completed. Staff believes there needs to be more consistency when it comes to CR and R communicating with staff in which, in which you see a significant decrease in missed collections before approving any fee adjustment. Now, the second reason for denying the fee adjustment is affordability. Fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, I'm sorry, fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty-two will be the third year of a five-year rate adjustment for all solid waste rates. Residential rates will increase seven percent from two hundred and forty dollars and sixty cents to two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty cents a year, which equates to twenty-one dollars and forty-five cents a month. Now, when the solid waste rate study was being performed in fiscal year two thousand and eighteen nineteen, the study took into consideration inflation, including future CPI requests from CR and R. The study took into account an inflation average of three point four percent for two fiscal years. Now, when the board approved CR and R's request for a, a five point eight CPI increase in two thousand and nineteen, expenditures exceeded revenues projected from the solid waste study that resulted in a variance of over three hundred and eight thousand dollars. CR and R's proposed CPI, CPI request for five points, five point six percent is again higher than the solid waste rate study inflation projection. And if approved, the district will be below the two million dollar fund balance by nearly three hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and below the minimum fund balance by over eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. You can see that in Exhibit Three in your staff report. The district needs a minimum fund balance of two million dollars to continue paying bills during the months when assessment fee revenues are not collected or not allocated, I'm sorry, not allocated from the county of Orange. So you're probably wondering, can the board approve a smaller fee adjustment? That's equal to the three point four percent inflation that was assumed in the study, in this always study. And the answer is yes. You can approve a lower fee adjustment, but a lower adjustment will still leave the district below the two million dollar fund balance. Even if the board approved a two point five percent adjustment, the district would be below the two million fund balance by over two hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, which you can see in Exhibit Four on your staff report. So if the board approves a five point six or a three point four, or even a two point five fee adjustment, it would require the district to conduct a Prop Two Eighteen hearing for another rate adjustment on top of the seven percent in twenty twenty-two and a six percent in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, that was approved by the board on May twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen. The district would also have to budget additional twelve thousand dollars to pay for printing and mailing Prop Two Eighteen notices. Now, Exhibit Five are, are the fund balance projections, and you'll see that does not include CNRs, that does not include CNR's proposed rate adjustment or fee adjustment. And you'll notice in the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three is balanced without using fund balance money. This is the first time we've done this in nearly eight years. This is the result of significant cuts made by staff that includes programs, staff development, uh, foregoing cost of living adjustments for staff, professional service, et cetera. So we made those cuts and we're able to balance the budget in twenty twenty-three without using fund balance. Now, we understand this past year was difficult for the solid waste industry, but it was difficult for everyone. And by requesting the public to consider approving a rate increase on top of another rate increase they just approved two years ago, we believe would be viewed very unfavorably by the public. Staff is recommending the board deny CNR's request for a fee adjustment. That concludes my presentations. I can answer your questions now, or I can defer to Mark Davis if you want him to present his findings on CNR's profit margin. Also, I want to mention that Exhibit Six in your staff report is a letter that, from CR and R, opposing staff's recommendation to deny CNR's request for a five point six percent CPI rate adjustment. I also want to mention that CR and R does want it to address the board regarding this issue, so that concludes my presentation.
I like to hear, uh, CR and R's request from CR and R.
Um, I, I, I think that would be appropriate. Uh, who, who wants to speak first?
My name is Dean Ruffridge, President Newton.
Yep, go ahead, Dean.
I'm Manager Carroll, President Newton, and board members. Uh, Dean Ruffridge with CR and R. Good morning, and it's good to see all of you once again. Um, it's difficult to budget, to do a five-year budget, and an extraordinary, with an extraordinary worldwide pandemic and unusual inflation now and anticipated in the next few years. A budget is our best guess for the next years, and there was no way to budget for the unknown. The pandemic has severely impacted CR and R with such things as labor, maintenance, and fuel. Our request to you today is, is a normal cost of living, not out of the ordinary with any other municipal contract in California. I'd like to turn our additional comments over to Mike Silva, and he'd like to address each and every one of the comments in the staff report. Mike?
You okay, Bob? Go for it.
Sure. Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
How you guys doing? Yeah, so, um, let me give you a little, it's a little background we're up against, and, uh, you guys are not alone. I apologize for that. You know, we service fifty cities and we've been having a tough time in all fifty cities. It's, it's no mystery. Um, nationwide, we're about fifty thousand drivers short for a Class C, I mean, excuse me, Class B and Class A drivers. This year, they instituted COVID pay eighty hours, so our guys get eighty hours off whether they get COVID or they get a vaccination. I literally have seven guys off today because they got vaccinated yesterday, and they get eighty hours off. And we can't do anything about that. And then the other thing, as you guys know, in California, and I don't know the real term for it, you guys can educate me on this, but most of our drivers are men, obviously. They now get maternity leave, so they get six weeks off for that. So if they have a baby, they get six weeks off for that. So we've been driver shortage this whole time, so that's what we've been battling. I think with all that said, not only ourselves, but our competitors in the county, we've worked together, and there's basically been no major trash on the street. Service hasn't been perfect. I, I totally agree with that. But there's not been trash on the street and any major issues. So that being said, so let me jog through, uh, some of the staff report. I happened to meet with Scott and Nabila and, uh, their staff. And, um, I'll go just real quick. You guys already got my letter there, so I won't belabor their points, but I'll just go jog through them. So one of the questions was about the RAD rates in LA and Riverside. So our LA rate is a hundred and twenty-eight fifty, and our Riverside rate is one twenty-seven sixteen. And Scott can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you guys are in the seventy-nine dollar range. I'm, I'm pretty close on that. So, uh, obviously, we've raised rates substantially, not in Costa Mesa. Also, in the report, they brought up truck age, which was subjective, not contractual, but we've agreed to address that. Um, most of our contracts are ten years. Um, right now, our average age in your city is eight and a half, and we agreed to buy four more trucks next year, excuse me, to bring the truck average down to five years, just because we want to address that concern. Uh, the other one was about talking about truck weights. We do have a couple routes that run heavy, but they are legal, and we did validate with, yeah, with your consultant, Mike Ballier, but he is concerned about the weight, so we're looking at rerouting that. And then per Scott's recommendation, we're looking at possibly using the, uh, Newport Beach Transfer Station, which we control. We haven't used it to its fullest extent. Uh, the signage, um, again, that's been remediated with, uh, Nabila and Mike Carey, and we can go into that if need be, but I, I believe our first truck is signed. Mike can address that if you wanted to see that. Uh, Christmas trees, complete disaster for everybody in the county. But we basically prioritized, and we should have communicated better with Scott and his staff. We picked up the trash first and the tree sat for a couple weeks. We, I even talked to Scott the other day about it. We probably should have ran a couple trucks on Sunday that just did trees. We can't do trash on Sunday because it's hard to get rid of it, but we can definitely do trees on Sunday. Uh, so we didn't do that. Um, then, I'll just go into this, oh, and then I, I think, uh, Mark Davis or Mike Ballier can, um, talk about it. We saw their report, and right now, we're losing money in the city of Costa Mesa, and I believe they validated that. So the CPI that Dean actually requested is actually two years in arrears. And I believe it's consistent with your projections. Maybe it hasn't been applied properly, but you guys projected, uh, three point four percent CPI. We're requesting a five point eight, but that's for two years. So we're actually within the budget that you guys had expected. And I know Scott and I, we talked about this four or five years ago. You guys had a big reserve, and at that time, I would say you were not charging your residents the full boat. So you guys were actually sucking up a portion of that, and I believe that's been eating your reserves. So the, the residents of Costa Mesa have been getting a, a discount gratis from you guys. Now, so that being said, I'm just looking at my notes real quick. The projected rate, if you were to charge the full boat, was twenty-one forty-five. You'll still be fifteen to twenty percent less than all the surrounding cities. Newport Beach will be fifteen percent, Mission Viejo, Laguna Niguel, San Juan Capistrano. So twenty-one forty-five, um, even with the increase, you'll still be below the, the county average by, um, ten to fifteen percent. Um, and I believe that covers everything. Holler with any direct questions.
Uh, Dean, do you have any other speakers?
Um, Mike Carey's on the line, and he'd be happy to talk to you about signage, and, and I think Nabila has a picture of our first truck with signs come off, and we're waiting for comments, so that's the only other thing, if you'd like to have any discussion on, uh, Mr. Newton.
Do, do, do any of the directors want to hear those comments?
Yeah, I'd like to hear them.
Yeah, I want to.
Okay, uh, Mike Carey, please.
Sure. Okay, so we had been working with staff regarding your, uh, desire to change out the, the banners on the trucks. Um, you had worked with Tripeppy Smith and, uh, developed a design that was submitted. We put together a prototype and just installed it on one of our trucks. I can pull up a picture of it, um, and use as my background. If I get my big head out of the way, you can kind of see what it looks like.
We'd, we'd rather see you.
There. Um, so that's the prototype on the first truck, and that just went up yesterday. We're talking with staff and trying to, um, adjust appropriately to be able to accommodate the, the quarterly promotional banners that, um, the sand district likes to promote for, you know, the Christmas trees fog program and organics program, but, um, that's the, the first blush of your new design.
Hey, Bob, I, I just have one last comment that, I just want to be clear that the CPI is, is indexed, and it's really, in our opinion, reimbursement for our increased costs and fuel, labor, et cetera. Uh, we don't, we're not adding anything on top of that. That was just, I just wanted to clarify that CPI in our definition is. Thank you.
And thank you.
Mr. President, Mr. President, I can address the, the signage issue? Since, since we're going to talk about it, if you mind if I address the, what Mike Carey just said?
Oh, you know, go ahead, Scott.
So I, thank you, uh, for Mike and Dean and, and, and both mics, I guess, for, for the signage, the, 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 it signs, the art looks great, it's what the board approved, but the size is wrong, and I think that's what Mike Carey was referencing to. Um, as you know, the, um, what you're seeing behind you, now we're, you're supposed to be two signs, you're supposed to be the, the sign right there that, that you approved, that's going to be on there at all times. And then below that should be a banner that could be interchangeable to promote our program, so that banner is missing. So again, it's not what the board approved. It's not what we were communicating to the, to CR and R to put the banner on. Again, it's just, it's this miscommunication that we keep experiencing with CR and R. So we, we, we appreciate the attempt, but it's not what we asked for.
Well, I think that's an issue that staff and CR and R need to continue to discuss and.
I agree with.
Absolutely.
Right, this, this was, um, intended just to, to highlight the new design that you had. There was no, uh, direction provided for new, um, quarterly signs. We still have the quarterly promotional signs that you had had in the past. And to my knowledge, I don't think, uh, there has been new quarterly signs, um, developed.
Well, there has been new, new quarterly signs developed, but again, I can show you, Mike, what the board approved a, a couple months ago on those designs and what it should look like, and it's not what that looks like.
Well, I thi- I think that's an item that staff and, uh, and CR and R need to continue to discuss, it sounds like, but, um, back, back, back to the, uh, the, the, the request. Did the directors have, uh, any comments on the discussion so far? Or the agenda report?
This is Mike.
Yes.
Is that for me?
Yes.
Okay, so the signs are one thing, and, and, and realistically, I'm not going to deny or approve any kind of increase based on the signs. That's something, that's a minor part of this discussion, and I hate to be blunt, but that's how I feel. Um, if I could, Bob, can I ask Mark Davis a couple of questions if he's there?
Sure.
Mark, are you, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, so when you did your investigation, or whatever you want to call it, of CR and R's records, I'm, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions, and, and if, obviously, if you don't have the answers, I'd like to hear from CR and R. Um, let's talk about fuel cost. Okay, so fuel costs for me and for everybody else during the pandemic dropped considerably. I hadn't paid that low for fuel for over a year, in a long, long time. Did, did your look at CR and R show any fuel cost decreases during the pandemic?
Oh, before I answer that, let me, let me clarify, um, just a couple, a couple things regarding the scope of what I was able to do. I did participate on a Zoom call. Uh, there was no in-person, um, meeting this time because of the pandemic, so we did it via Zoom. And, um, uh, individuals from CR and R shared screens with me and shared, um, information with me. Um, shared their screens with me so I could see information. The information that they provided, uh, on their profit and loss associated with just the district contract was for just a nine-month period only. Uh, it didn't cover any more than, uh, the nine months of the current year, which was July one of twenty through March thirty-one of twenty-one. There was no information, uh, that I had available to be able to see like year-over-year changes, uh, in operations other than what I could remember from the prior, uh, review two years ago. The information is, uh, per contract is confidential, and I'm not allowed to take anything, uh, with me. I can take notes and I can ask questions. Uh, I do know that the, I did ask about fuel costs and all that I was able to click, get out of that was it's, um, uh, the district is only charged for the actual fuel, uh, that's used for the specific trucks servicing the routes. the district is only charged for the actual fuel that's used for the specific trucks servicing the routes. But I would defer to to C R N R on that. I do have other comments related to the review, if you want to hear those that are unrelated to your question.
One other thing, one other part of it, and yes, I would like to hear your comments, but were you able to determine if C R N R received any COVID federal or state COVID relief funding for businesses?
I did not. In the information that was provided that we shared on screen, there was nothing that stood out related to that. I did ask a follow-up question a week ago, and I've yet to receive a response.
Okay, and Bob, if it's okay, can we have Mark give his comments?
Yes, that would be appropriate.
Okay, so just at a high level, again, without getting into detail, we can't really do by contract. C R N R did share their P and L calculations, and I did have the ability to be able to ask questions of those. The P and L that was provided was a linked Excel spreadsheet, and at first blush, you would think that was just a spreadsheet that somebody types numbers on to and may not have actual underlying support. They were able to drill down, and they were able to show me that the numbers did, in fact, come from their system and were linked from their system to that, so I felt a little bit more comfortable. But it's really important to note that this was not an audit. I did not get a chance to see any underlying support for some of the numbers that were included in the Their P and L does include corporate and regional allocations, which would be expected of a company this this size. The methodology that they use to allocate their corporate and regional costs is reasonable, and I could see that those corporate and regional costs were allocated across all of their contracts, not just the district in the same fashion. The one thing I can't see is what are those corporate and regional costs and whether or not that they're would I would consider to be allowable type of costs, or whether there's lots of things that the district might be concerned about that would be in those allocations that we could not tell. They did respond to most of my questions during the during the call. As was indicated earlier, they did report a loss for the district's contract for this nine-month period. In discussions, they do, they did believe that this loss would go away within the year. And what was driving the loss was really the sale of the mark, the recyclables, and that being down from the prior experience. And if recyclables go back to what they just even had in the prior year, then the contract would be in a in total for the hauler, the organics, and the recycling components in total would generate a profit. And then I did already respond. I did ask about if they had received any type of federal or other COVID-related assistance, but I'm still have not heard about that, and maybe C R N R can respond on this call to that question.
Before they respond, Mark, statement was just made that the residents of Costa Mesa are getting a big discount from us. How do you, how do you react to that?
I don't see it as a a discount. I see it as, over the years, the district has generated excess revenue over expenses within its solid waste fund. And those reserves have been built up and that the Board of Directors, over the last several years, have made a conscious decision to to use those extra funds as a rate stabilization to not increase rates over time, but to be able to subsidize those rates to get that reserve level back down because the the revenue that was being generated in prior years was more than what was needed, and this was a way to give back to the rate players than what they had paid.
Which is well within our purview.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Do any of the other directors have questions or?
I just have a comment, Bob.
Yes, sir.
We discussed the budget and the increases. We knew that we probably were giving back too much money, and we probably knew that we were going to be having to increase our fees for C R N R. I mean, I don't know if you remember those discussions, but we, I think you and I were certain that would happen, and we, but we still gave back all of the funds. And we knew that we're going to be in this budget print press for an increase. And I don't think we planned properly. And giving back all those funds that we had, we should have done it in a different way. That's my comment.
Well, I sort of would agree that timing, timing was, you and I were imploring the district staff to move a little more quickly than they they did. And maybe, and maybe they couldn't move more quickly, but do any of the other directors have input on this?
Mr. President, I have two questions.
Yes.
My first one is for Mark. Mark, if I heard you correctly and understood, when you looked at the P and L, it was for our district only or or corporate-wide for their company?
It was just for the district only.
Okay, so no information was provided on their overall corporate P and L?
That that's correct. The only information related to that was just when I had asked the question regarding indirect costs and allocation from the corporate and regional. And they shared only what other contracts that they have were receiving in their allocation, so I could see that was reasonable, but nothing at a corporate level at all related to profit loss.
Okay, gotcha. And I had a couple of similar questions as Vice President Schaefer, so I'll I'll let those float out there and get addressed, but I do have one additional question, maybe of Mr. Silva, if right now is the appropriate time, and my question or my comment slash question would be my opinion on some of the performance issues. Obviously, some are certainly understandable during the pandemic, get that. But my opinion, a lot of this could have been rectified and through better communication, and I think you've addressed that with, yes, we need to do better communicating with with our with our folks, but really, I want to see or hear, okay, well, if we're going to communicate better on these performance issues, what exactly are you going to change to communicate better so we can head off some of these performance issues with our ratepayers? Because that's the key. If a ratepayer knows something's going to go wrong a couple days ahead, great, we can all live with that. So my question would be, Mr. Silva, if you could just talk about maybe some of the things that your company is looking to do to improve that communication?
Mike?
Go ahead. Go for it, Bob.
Yeah.
Okay, let me, you guys asked me three questions. I'll try to address the best I can. So going back to Mike Schaefer, I don't want you to think, Mike, that I said you guys were giving him a discount. Different than, like Mark said, you weren't charging him the whole amount, so you were paying for some of that. That's all I was saying. I'm not saying you're giving him a discount. You're eating up your reserves. You weren't charging the full boat that we're charging you guys. So that's the first one. To the best of my knowledge, and I'll find out, Mark, for you literally today, I don't think we've got any COVID relief that I know of. I don't remember any of the PPP loans or things like that, because probably like you guys, I sit on some boards of some charitables, like Boys and Girls Club, we've got a big PPP loan, but I don't think C R N R got any of that. I think we're too big for that. And then the fuel cost, Mike, I believe they were flat for us, only because, as you know, we make our own R and G. So we've been at the bottom of the barrel for five years now, so there's really no place for it to go for us. Kind of been, you know, at the bottom to begin with. And just so you guys know, whatever R and G we do not make, we purchase that R and G from a company called Clean Energy. So all my trucks run R and G, whether I make it or I buy it. So that's been pretty frugal from the first get-go. We did that about five years ago. And then the last one, Director Eccles asked me about communication. So what we've done is the first line of communication is Mike Carey, which is his life, you know, he eats strings and sleeps Costa Mesa now, and he has direct access to all of our operations people. And then I asked Scott Carroll if, for some reason, Mike doesn't give him the response he wants, that I'm the next line of defense. Maybe you guys know, and hopefully Dean can chime in. Dean is semi-retired now, and he's, and he's, what do you call that? Transitioning out. You know, he's living in the desert now, and so we brought on two new people, which I told Scott about the other day. We brought in a gentleman named Chip Monaco and Julie Barretto, and they're transitioning our city is over, and so we're in that process. The reason I'm in the middle of it, Brett, you don't know me that well. You're my oldest client. I signed you guys up when I was a kid, literally twenty-five, thirty years ago, so I've kind of stepped in to kind of help with that transition process. That's kind of where we're at. I think I know Nabilah's in the loop, and so heard Mike Carey been talking directly, but that's kind of where we're at.
All right, thank you. And Mr. President, just one more question while I have Mr. Silva on the line.
Sure.
And this maybe is a dual question to you and Scott, because we recently, as a board, looked at C P I increases in-house, of course, and reviewed that, and it was more, I'm just going to round up and use easy numbers, but somewhere around three, and you're coming in a little bit like six, so you touched on maybe that discrepancy being a two-year, but can you just elaborate maybe on the possible differences between those two?
Yeah, it's real simple, Brett, Director Brett, excuse me. Ours is two years, so our five point eight is actually two point nine. It's that simple. We have a two-year look back, and we've always done two years with you guys. So that's why it looks, it looks bigger than it is, divided by two.
Okay, and then Scott, when we were looking at it, I mean, I thought we were looking at for a two-year budget, but maybe I missed that. Does that hold water?
Well, yes, the three point four percent that we projected in the study was also for two years. So so that's what, one point seven, you know, almost two percent a year? So that was, that was our projections, so just the the C P I came in higher.
Okay, all right. Thank you both.
Do any of the other directors have questions?
I just had a comment on the communications. I think that is something so important that we look at the communications and see some real action on it before, you know, we do anything else with it, that maybe we can take each piece looking at C R N R, what they've done and what we're hearing today, and turn around and say, okay, on the communications, this is what we'd like to do. We'd like to put out a letter to say, or a flyer, whatever. And that way, we could get some satisfaction from not only us, but the constituents. Thank you.
Any of the other directors have input?
Mr. President, I knew Lester has her hand raised for public comment.
Well, I'm not sure. I need to check. I don't know if it's appropriate for the Sue had her chance before that, and I don't, I need to ask Alan if it's appropriate for the public to weigh in again during the boards of directors' discussion or after.
Mr. President, I can, I can help address, so.
Okay.
What those, that was under public comment section, so so understand the public comment is regarding any items on the agenda. Unfortunately, there were some items already spoken about the agenda, but typically, on every item on the agenda, after the board has a discussion, you open it up for public comment, so it is appropriate to receive public comment on this item.
Okay, so Sue just needs to wait her turn. Dean?
President Newton, thank you. Two comments I have. Director Schaefer, you're absolutely correct about communications. Prior to the pandemic, Scott Carroll, myself, our operations group, we used to meet on a regular basis, either at Scott's office or at our office. And we would, we would do it almost monthly, and we do monthly meetings with some of your neighboring cities. It's actually written into the contract that we shall have monthly meetings, but most of these, since the pandemic, have all been by Zoom or by telephone call, and you don't get the personal communications as you would in person. We would be happy to start that up again. I think we can now, based upon the governor's direction. So I think that's one thing that we should do and we will do. The other thing I want to make a comment about, how competitive this business is. The waste business is an unbelievably competitive business, almost as bad as the insurance company, Mike, but you know, it's very unusual. I've done contracts with cities for forty years. It's very, very unusual for a city or a municipality or a district to review the profit-loss statements of a private company. We agreed to do that. Manager Carroll insisted on that when we did this contract few, four or five years ago, Scott. And so we agreed to that. I think, I think looking away from the profit-loss, what really needs to be done as other cities do is take a look at how competitive was our rate compared to other cities, not only around us, but throughout the state. So Mike, Mike Silva kind of touched on it, and I hope you all caught it. But there's been three or four cities that have actually gone out to bid in the last couple of years around you. Mission Viejo, Laguna Niguel, San Juan Capistrano, and a final negotiation with Newport Beach, which, as many of you know, you watch very, very closely what the rates are. And the thing about it is that your rate at twenty one dollars, you've got a very good value to your constituents. You're ten to twenty percent less than anything that has currently gone out to bid. And remember, a number of these cities will not have rate increases to their constituents until January one, when the requirements of S B thirteen eighty-three take effect. So right now, next door, Newport Beach, and I know the directors watch that city very close. We've negotiated a new rate with them, and it is public. It's over twenty-four dollars a month. You're at twenty one dollars. That's a fifteen percent reduction in what you have right next door. And remember, there's a lot of commercial in that city. So I think, I think better than looking at our profit-loss, which, again, we're upside down, and to continue a contract that's upside down, you're all business people. You know that, how do you do that for two years? So I think the rate speaks for itself. You've got a very good rate. You should be very proud of your rate. And all of your constituents in that city should be very, very proud of what the district has done, not only now, but in the last five or six years, keeping the rate stable. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other directors have input? You know, I have a couple of comments. You know, I disagree. Well, I'm concerned that the C R N R rate increases are calculated differently than 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 staff C I P increases, and I know that's by contract, so that's a done deal. It turns out the done deal, though, is that that their rate increases can be different, and in this case, it seems to be more. We have a big task ahead of us with thirteen eighty-three. I, I would like to hear C R N R's comments about, you know, are we ahead of the game with our organics program or and then do we just need to do major education? I think C R N R had provided some support to do some pilot testing, and they were unable to do that because of personnel concerns, but but they gave the district some money for that. We have, I think we're just in an untenable position, even though our rates are lower. We're substantially using up our reserves. We're not an agency that's willing to take on debt and 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 pay as you go business. This part of our business. If the staff reports are accurate, and I believe for the most part they are, and they've made substantial reductions. You know, it's untenable to me to ask, to go out and ask the ratepayers for an increase, no matter what the confluence or what the criteria that's gotten us to where we are. You know, I think we're in, we're in desperate, we're in a desperate position, and you know, I I am going to work diligently to try to get us out of it, but Dean, do you have any comments on what I've asked for or?
Well, I think you brought up another really good point, President Newton, but the reality is this. As I said in my opening statement, inflation is with us right now. You see it at the grocery store. I tell you, I have my insurance premiums. It just came on my cars and on my house. They've all gone up ten to twenty percent. And I think you're going to see inflation based upon And I think you're going to see inflation based upon what I watch on the internet and on the, on the television. I think we're going to see inflation the next couple of years. I will tell you that communication with the general public is so important. When, when we did twenty and thirty percent increases, not we, but when our cities went off to bid and did twenty and thirty percent increases when they went off to bid for solid waste services starting January of twenty-two. They explained to the public why. It wasn't because of their hauler. It wasn't be, because of the city or the municipality or the district. It was because of requirements placed on the, on the jurisdiction by the state of California. And it's all, it's all based upon coming down from Sacramento. It's nothing locally. You're asking for programs, cities are asking for programs. We're gonna, we're going to, we've talked to your staff about going to a three-card program, which I think is going to be required. And, and we're going to be talking to your staff about that later this year. It's, it's all coming down from Sacramento. It's, it's publicly, it's telling the public, hey, listen, we have programs. We've got to do this. We've got to do that. And listen, it's not us talking. It's Sacramento telling us what we have to do.
Yeah, it's, it's climate, you know, now it's climate. It's also climate change driven. Thirteen eighty-three is a climate change in, you know. Its background comes from climate change and Sacramento is, is going to be hard-nosed about this. Do any of the other directors have input or comments or questions?
I think we should hear from the public. Sue's one, and then we can make a determination what we want to do.
Okay, Sue, go ahead. Sue, are you there?
I, yes, I am. Sue Lester. I am a resident here, but I am also a member of the Citizen Advisory Committee, but I am not speaking on behalf of the Citizen Advisory Committee. I appreciate all the information that CR and R has, has presented to the board. But at the end of the day, they are lobbying for a raise for their company. And although they made some good points, their financial interest is with their company. Just as our general manager's financial interest and, and what he needs to be concerned with is the district. And we have an extremely competent staff at the district. We have an extremely competent general manager who has for several years turned down a raise that he earned and proved he was entitled to based on the overall financial situation of things. Now, the board is being asked to subsidize the, the hurdles that CR and R has incurred. And as much as I feel for them, it's a request and you are not obligated to do it. General Manager Carroll laid out very clearly that if this CPI increase is, is approved, that it's going to tap into money that we need. We are going to fall below the minimum amount of funds that the district needs to have. So I, I, as much as I appreciate the idea that they can ask, because at the end of the day, you know what? The answer is no, if you don't ask. So they should ask for a raise or an increase for CPI every two years. They're going to find a way to justify it. So I am asking the board respectfully to support your general manager and support your staff in their recommendations and choose your ratepayers instead of your vendors. Because if you approve this, it's going to come back on the ratepayers and all the ratepayers suffered during the pandemic, just as CR and R did, just as the district did. It, it's across the board. So we should not be subsidizing CR and R's financial shortcomings. And then the district shouldn't be passing those along to the ratepayers. So please, please, please don't approve this. Thank you for your time.
Madam Clerk, are there any other hands raised that, that I, I can't see?
I do not see any at this time, Mr. President.
Do any of the directors have any more comments or discussion items or questions?
Mr. President, I do.
Brett?
Several comments. First, I want to thank staff and CR and R to put all this information together and responses very thorough and, and really gave us, I, I believe, a, a lot of great information for us to deliberate and discuss and, and ultimately make a decision. I'm just going to talk about my own business because where I am at right now, as we speak, and my phone keeps ringing, but it's muted. So I understand these long-term contracts. The, the district and CR and R entered into a long-term agreement several years ago. The risk, there's a lot of benefits to that, but there is risk to that. In my own business, for some reason, construction right now, long-term construction projects seem to be the new norm. I don't know exactly why, but it is. Used to be, we'd bid on a project, we'd do a project usually within a year, be done, be paid, be gone. Now we're taking on four and five-year projects. There's a lot of risk in that. I'm in the steel business right now. The steel prices are an all-time high. Our fuel, our diesel, all that is going upwards. Well, on four projects, I just signed long-term agreements, one of which I'm already upside down on. It's, it's a risk. Hopefully by year four, maybe it'll get better for me and we could, we could do better. Another project, it's going to be in my benefit. So I'll be profitable on that. So just as, as they have multiple municipalities and cities and districts, I have the same issue with different projects. So that's why focusing on overall profitability and, and things of that nature. So the risk in entering into a long-term contract is just that inflation will go up at some point. Fuel will go up and down. Employment issues, as, as was pointed out, in California, it's pretty tough with the regs and the changes from Sacramento. It is pretty tough as a, a private business to continue to hopefully be profitable because they're, they're not a nonprofit. They're there to make money. And so I get that and I understand that, but the risk in signing long-term agreements is just that. I have to assume their folks, when bid on this project or on this contract, assumed some, some of these cost factors and built that into their proposal to the previous board. So, you know, and, and it's none of my business what, what those were, but I'm going to assume they bid this properly. So going back to our own budget. My own definition is, is, is much as the staff has done a great job, we're going to touch on it and making cuts and, and, and putting in all of our requests. It's not exactly a balanced budget. We're using reserves. So if we're using reserves and we're, you know, there, there's a rate increase that has already gone out to the ratepayers. It, it's already been approved and our budget, we're operating it technically at a loss and we're going to use reserves to balance it. How are we going to justify over another half a million dollar hit? When we're scraping by trying to find ten thousand here, twenty thousand there, fifty thousand there. I just cannot see us taking that sort of hit in our budget at this, at this juncture, especially when probably about two years ago, the board approved a CPI increase, you know, after the first year or two of the contract. So, and the, and then also to the members of the public who have commented and those who might be listening. Everyone's suffering. COVID brought all sorts of unexpected things to everyone. I can't in good conscience give a raise essentially when everyone else is taking hits and, and in their personal and professional lives. So I'm just looking at, at, you know, from a business standpoint and then also our own budget standpoint. So that's what I have at this juncture. Thank you.
Any other directors have, have discussed, need, need to continue the discussion or have further questions?
I, I kind of disagree with Brett in some parts. I think we're in a business also, but, and I think that I would recommend the rate adjustments for CR and R because they are in a business and we're at the lowest rate around compared to the Newport Beach and Mission Viejo. I think we're justified. And if we have to go to a two eighteen hearing rate adjustment, I think we can do that to bring more funds into the district. So my recommendation is to approve the rate adjustment.
Do any of the other directors have discussions or questions or input? Or do I have a motion for many of the directors?
I'll, I'll make that motion. To approve the rate adjustment at two point nine per each year.
Is there a second? Hearing none, does any other director have a motion to make?
Mr. President. I'll, I'll make a motion to deny the CPI increase based upon staff's report. Of denying the rate increase. That would be my motion. And just as a follow-up, I, I, I don't have a problem with, even in six months, nine months, twelve months, re-looking at this. And maybe, you know, things are different then and, and we could certainly bring this forth again less than two years if, if that comes up. But my motion would be to deny the CPI increase.
I, I'm going to second the motion. And Brett, you, you, you kind of took what I was going to say. Mark's comments regarding the loss for CR and R with recyclables. I, I was going to ask, and if we want to make it part of the motion, I think we should, that in six months, we re-look at this to see where we are in terms of recyclables and the, the costs that. I, I think the costs have been heavily influenced. I'm not going to beat a dead horse with COVID. And I think it's premature to do this CPI right now, but I think we should take a look at it again in six months and see where we stand.
I, I would agree to that friendly amendment.
Discussion, discussion.
Well, go ahead. Is, is that Arlene?
Yes, it's Arlene. Anyway, I, I would just like to say that I have to agree on this disagreeing because we need to look at what the R and R can do to change things for us with the communications, making a list, saying something that makes sense to us that we could at least, you know, go to our constituents and say, this is what's happening. But without that, and then I'm looking at the financials of our budget, what's going to happen with our budget and, and the low that we're in, we have to think about our safety too. I mean, we're risking ourselves. And that's important.
Well, I, I think, I, I, I agree with the, the motion. Because I believe that a significant factor in, in the district's future is whether or not we, we go back to a pre-pandemic tonnage. And, and I believe that as, as I've talked to other, other districts and whatnot cities, I believe they're starting to experience that. So I, I would, I would support the motion.
Well, I also feel that we should look at it in six months and see what has been accomplished. I think that's fair to both sides.
I think that's the motion on the floor. We have a second. Brett, Brett, did you second the amendment?
Yeah, I accept the friendly amendment. Yeah. Or I think that's the technical term. I don't know.
I, I don't know what the term is, but so roll call vote please. Malani?
Yes, Director Echols?
Yes.
Director Perry?
No.
Secretary Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice President Schaefer?
Yes.
President Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries for one.
Thank you all very much for your input and very good discussion. Well, now we need to go on to item number two. The preliminary biannual budget review for fiscal year 2021 and, and, and the next year. Scott, do you, are you, are you or Caitlin going to lead this discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. Caitlin Trent will be leading the discussion.
Caitlin?
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Um, Malani, can I share the screen right?
Yes, you are co-hosted.
Can you?
No, let me.
Okay, there you go.
There you go.
Okay. So here I have attachment A and attachment B showing here. But it's very, all the numbers are very small. I don't think you can see it if I share both attachments. So I will make attachment A bigger. So right now I'm looking at attachment A, page three. And this is fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two line item budget. Okay. So at the special meeting, staff presented to the board the preliminary biannual budget review for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. In front of you today is the preliminary budget updated after the special meeting. The budget numbers in this report are in comparison to the report presented at the study, at the special meeting. I will highlight some expense accounts from attachment A fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two and attachment B fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. Starting with attachment A of fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, the solid waste solid waste preliminary budget presented at May sixth special meeting has a deficit of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand eight hundred. Staff made some budget cuts and reduced the budget, the deficit budget by a hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred. In today's report, the solid waste fund preliminary budget deficit is, you can see here, two hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred. The updated wastewater fund preliminary budget has a deficit of four hundred and seventeen thousand three hundred right here. Creating a deficit requiring the use of reserve to balance the budget. After the special meeting, staff had to make some adjustment resulting in a deficit increase of a hundred and four thousand one hundred, mainly due to the resignation of the engineering technician, construction inspector. The district plans to recruit for the engineering technician and contract out the construction inspection services. Attachment B. Fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. After the special meeting, staff further reduced the expenditure to have a surplus of twenty-five thousand dollars in the preliminary solid waste fund budget here. The updated wastewater fund preliminary budget has a deficit of two hundred and eighty-two thousand two hundred. So you can see here, creating a deficit will require the use of reserve to balance the budget. This is an increase of seventy-eight thousand eight hundred deficit after the special meeting. After the special meeting, two positions became vacant, therefore the salaries and benefits in both fiscal year have been adjusted. Staff assumed the new hires in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, starting salaries will be at the beginning salary range resulting in some savings. The fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two salaries and benefits are reduced by fifty thousand ten thousand in the solid waste fund and forty-one thousand in the wastewater fund. Fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three salaries and benefits are reduced by thirty-four thousand seven hundred ten thousand dollars five hundred in the solid waste fund and twenty-four thousand two hundred in the wastewater fund. As mentioned earlier, beginning fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, the district will the district will recruit for the engineering technician position resulting in $11,000 savings. The district will contract out the construction inspection services with an estimated cost of 92,400 um, a year. This budget is, this is budgeted under the, um, operation and maintenance, uh, section of the budget, which is, um, right here. You can see under wastewater. Okay. While waiting for, waiting to fill the wastewater maintenance worker to position, the district anticipates to contract with a staffing agency for a temporary worker for at least four months. The, the estimated cost for the four month contract is 40,000. The salaries and benefits savings for the four month period for the wastewater maintenance to position is 24,000. Staff reduce 24,000 from the wastewater maintenance salaries and benefits and increase 40,000 to the contract services wastewater, um, account. Now, um, moving along, recycling disposal and organics disposal. Recycling disposal tonnage, staff assume recycling tonnage will increase by 3% in the next two fiscal years. This is 1% less than the preliminary budget presented, presented at the special meeting. As for organics disposal, staff assumes organics tonnage will increased by 5% in the next two fiscal years. This is 3% less than the preliminary budget presented at the special meeting. Next, um, I want to talk about the staff development account for both solid waste and wastewater funds. The staff developments account have budget cuts of 11,600 in fiscal year 2021, 22 and 5,100 in fiscal year 2022, 23. In the staff report, there's a list of training and conferences that staff cut after the special meeting. If the board would like to, um, keep any of these conferences or training, please direct staff to do so. And then next is the, um, I want to talk about the liability insurance. The total liability insurance budget presented at the special meeting were 196,000 for fiscal year 2021, 22 and 235,200 for fiscal year 2022, 23. After that meeting, the district received a revised estimated liability insurance contribution from S D R M A. For fiscal year 2021, 22, um, the revised amount is 233,100. And an increase, that's an increase of 37,100, um, for fiscal year 21, 22 and, um, an increase of 21,000 in fiscal year 2022, 23. Which total liability insurance for that year is 256,200. Okay, so that's the, um, overall, the highlights that I want to touch on attachment A and B. And as we discussed earlier in, um, the agenda item number one for C R and R CPI adjustment. So I will, I want to highlight again, attachment C in my report here is the solid waste fund balance projection. Staff assume no C I, CPI rate adjustment for C R and R in the next two fiscal years. Looking at this, uh, projection, the proposed preliminary budget has a deficit of, um, 242,900 in fiscal year 2021, 22, as you can see here. Okay, and then a surplus of 25,000 in fiscal year 2022, 23. Based on the contract, C R and R may request a CPI, um, rate adjustment every two years. So in this projection, I assume that, um, in fiscal year 2024, 23, 24, the next two years, T R and R will come back and ask for another CPI rate adjustment. And, um, the estimated, um, CPI rate increase of, I'm assuming in this projection here, 5.5%. By, with, with this scenario, in this case, by fiscal year 2024, 25, the district is estimated to have approximately only 75,000 in reserve, as you can see down here. So, um, next. I want to share the attachment.
Caitlin, can I interrupt for a second?
Yes, yes.
Because we just told C R and R that they could, in six months, we'll review this again. So how are we going to, if we approve that in six months, how are we going to fund their expenses?
Well, in six months, we'll have to come back and look at, um, the tonnage. Um, because this, this, my projection here, it's, um, my budget, it's based on the tonnage of recycling and, and organics. And if the, um, if the tonnage are not going to increase, but if it's going to go on the opposite direction, if it's continued to decrease, then there's going to be a savings. And that can be, um, part of.
But you're also saying that 23, 24, that we're only going to have $75,000 left in the account. So we have to have some type of, of budget adjustment or a 218 hearing to increase those fees. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. And it depends on what's the percentage of this, let's say, six months from now, what they're asking for and what you're going to approve at what percent.
Right, they're requesting 2.9 for each year. And they're, you're saying that in 20, 23, 24, their proj- your projection is 5.5 and they're still going to be in a deficit.
Yes. And I'm, I'm assuming every two years they're going to come back for our CPI requests.
Well, that's part of our contract with them, that they can come back because of their expenses that they're incurred from the state requirements.
Yes.
So I think we need to look at this real closely as a board. That we're, I think we're going to have to go to a 218 adjustment from what we originally put out for a five year plan. And I think we should do that sooner than later because it's coming, it's going to affect us rapidly. Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions before I move on?
Would you, would you go to, would you go to the bottom of that chart, please? Okay, thank you.
So lastly, I have, um, I want to talk about attachment F, which is the wastewater projections. As you can see here, um, revenue from the wastewater service charge is not sufficient to meet the projected expenses, which will require the use of reserves to balance the, this budget cycle. Fiscal year 2021, 22, um, deficit of 417,300 and fiscal year 2022, 23 deficit of 282,200. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do any of the board members have questions?
Yeah, Bob, just a quick question for Scott, maybe. Normally CPI increases are requested or done on an annual basis, right?
W- what? CPI for what, for staff?
For, for, I mean, every job I've ever had and every position I've ever had, CPI increases were looked at on a yearly basis.
Right.
What, re- remind me or refresh me on why we, we go every two years with C R and R?
Because we do a two-year budget.
Yeah, okay, that, I think that was too easy for me to remember, so I appreciate that.
Uh, do any of the other directors have questions or comments or discussion items?
Um, Mr. President?
Brett?
A question, just, and I apologize Caitlin, a lot of information obviously to absorb, but in the blue on salaries, benefits, uh, and wastewater, uh, you guys reduce the budget numbers for salaries, overtime compensated, absences, cafeteria plan, blah, 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 retirement. Uh, can you just touch back again, because I know, uh, overtime has been discussed last call me. Wha- what happened there? How were you able to reduce that on overtime?
The overtime reduced because we, um, as I said recently, we have two vacant positions. So, um, one of them, it's the, um, uh, engineering technician slash inspector. So now we're planning to contract out the ins- inspector position. And the engineering technician, um, with that position in the past, as I know, um, that person, they, um, he or she don't go out, um, at night or to do overtime as much as when you combine the inspector and the engineering technician together. So because we contract out the, um, inspector position.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Any other directors, comments, inputs or questions? If not, thank you very much Caitlin. Um, I appreciate all the work you've done to put this budget together and, um,
Yeah.
And, and we, and, and we likely will be back in six months to, uh, make you go through the process substantially again. Let, let, what is, what is the next item?
So, Mr. President, just for clarification, so, so we have no more comments from the board on the budget, then we're going to present the budget back to you on, on June 28th for adoption. So you'll be adopting, um, an ordinance and a couple of resolutions, the resolutions for the, the, the rates that'll go into effect in fiscal year and the, the ordinance as well. So we'll bring that back to you on, on, on June 28th.
Okay, thank you Scott. Let's go on to the receiving file, uh, the quarter two legislative report. Is that Gina?
Yes, Mr. President, Gina will be giving us report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and good morning, members of the board. Uh, before you, as our second quarter legislative report covering congressional and state legislation that is relevant to the district. I'm going to provide a brief overview of bills that the district has taken a position on and also a few other bills that represent current trends and topics of interest. So starting with the congressional bills, we have House Bill 535 and Senate Bill 91. These are companion bills that represent the special districts provide essential services act, which is supported by the National Special District Coalition as well as the California Special District Association. The act seeks to formally, formally make funding available to special districts through the coronavirus relief fund, since special districts were not eligible for funding, funding under the CARES Act. Uh, according to C S D A, the pandemic has had an estimated 1.92 billion dollar impact on California special districts and about 42% of districts have reduced their services as a result. So this could definitely do some good for special districts that are struggling financially. And there are various other bills that we're watching on the congressional level that focus on water, wastewater and waste management infrastructure. A lot of them are looking to establish grant funding for things like water recycling and reuse projects like H R 1015. Um, there's also several bills supporting water and wastewater infrastructure like H R 1352, H R 1915, S 914 and S 916. Um, and then lastly, there's H R 1512, which supports building large, uh, large scale composting or anaerobic digestion facilities. Um, so we're just watching those to see how they go, um, and how they progress. So on the state level, we are supporting a couple of bills. Um, first is A B 361. This bill would allow local agencies like ours to conduct teleconference meetings under specified circumstances, such as a local or state emergency or in cases where health officials have imposed social distancing requirements. And this would allow public agencies some more flexibility when it comes to meeting during emergency situations. And it's very much similar to the governor's executive order that we're currently operating under. And that bill has passed in the assembly and our representative, Assemblywoman Codi Petrinus has voted in favor of it. And then another bill we're supporting is A B 818. And this bill would require manufacturers of wipes to include a label on the packaging that says do not flush. Um, this bill is also seeing some movement. It did pass in the assembly and Assemblywoman Codi Petrinus, Petrinus also voted in favor of it. Um, we are concerned about one bill, A B 59. This bill would create or alter several rules surrounding sewer connection and capacity fees. Among other things, it would speed up the timeline for noticing hearings for new or increased connection or capacity fees. And it would require the agency to post a comprehensive explanation of how the fees were determined on their website. Uh, ultimately, the requirements of A B 59 would increase the liability for public agencies, uh, since they would create more opportunities for litigation related to protesting these types of fees. Uh, but luckily this bill doesn't seem to be moving, so, um, we're thinking that it probably is not going to pass at this point. So we should be okay on that one. Um, in addition to those bills that we've taken a position on, there are a couple other notable bills that I wanted to point out. Um, A B 703 is another bill that would allow public agencies to conduct partially teleconference meetings. Uh, it's pretty similar to A B 361, but it would require a quorum to be present at a designated meeting location in person. Uh, and then the other board members or the public could join by phone or internet. So it's more of a hybrid style teleconference meeting. Um, on the solid waste side, we're watching A B 881. And if passed, the state would no longer recognize exported plastics as waste diversion through recycling, unless they are exported to Canada or Mexico. Um, also on the solid waste side is S B 244. This bill would prohibit anyone from knowingly disposing of lithium ion batteries in their trash carts and it would require trash haulers to adopt protocols for safe handling of those batteries, as well as suppressing any fires that occur as a result. Um, that bill is supported by C R and R. Uh, and then on the employment side, we're watching A B 1041. This bill would expand the purpose of sick leave. Um, and it would allow employees to use sick days to care for any designated person uh, other than just themselves and family members. So if people needed to care for a neighbor or a friend, um, that would be allowed under that bill. Uh, and then related to property taxes, we have S B 219. This would authorize the tax collector to cancel any tax delinquency penalties if the failure to pay is due to hardships related to the pandemic, uh, as long as the payment is made by the end of the fiscal year. Um, and then lastly, we have S B 594. Uh, it's another bill that C S D A is watching pretty closely. It would provide some clarification regarding redistricting requirements for special districts. Uh, since the census data is expected to be delayed until the end of September this year, the bill would state that no changes can be made to special district division boundaries within 180 days of an election. And so, meaning that division boundaries would need to be updated at least 180 days prior to the district's next election in 2022. Um, so that concludes my report for today. I'm happy to answer any questions and you can find more detail in the attached staff report.
Okay, do any of the directors have questions?
Real quick question, Bob, if I can, with Gina?
Yes.
The, the one on the recycling credits that can only go to Canada or
The, the one on the recycling credits, they can only go to Canada or Mexico. Which one was that?
That was AB 881.
Okay, so, so any credits, if we send anything to Southeast Asia, we get no credit, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Whose idea was this?
There's actually a number of, of writers. It's on page 16 in the staff report.
Okay, yeah, okay. I can look at it. Thanks. Hey, I just, that boggles, how can you tell free enterprise, you can only go to certain places? And anyway, that's, that's.
It may or may not pass.
Exactly. But, I mean, how do they think of this stuff?
You, you've lived in California, Mike, long enough. You should answer your own question.
I've lived here for 67 and a half years. You think I'd know better, right? It's just, that just boggles them. Like, so you're going to limit people where they can send stuff? What if those two countries say, sorry, guys, we don't want your stuff anymore? Right? Anyway, okay. That's why they get elected to bigger office than me.
Yeah. Thank you, Gina. If there are no other questions.
Gina, I just want to make one comment. Gina, if you want, I can give you the ISDAQ ledge every, every month so that you can look at that too, how it coincides with what you have.
Sure. Yeah, feel free to send it to me. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, in that vein, Gina, if, if, if your night and evenings and weekends are free, you can also look at Orange County Sand District's ledge reports.
I have been looking at those.
Okay, thank you. Do any of the directors have any oral communications or directors' comments?
Mr. President, I do.
Brett, go ahead.
I just again want to thank Caitlin so much for the work that she's put forth and Scott and all of staff. As this has been my first budget process with this organization. We, we've asked a lot. We've, no one wants to cut and they've done a tremendous job to, we won't use the word cut everywhere, but to economize where possible and make some serious decisions that aren't easy. And I know that firsthand how hard it is to do that. So I really appreciate their work and continue to work and in a couple of weeks, look forward to a final budget. So thank you.
Any other input?
I just want to echo what he's saying because it's so true. They've done such a good job, more than I ever expected. So, and we've, I've done budgets for quite a while, but that's a great.
Well, I, I'd be interested in, you know, the, the savings from the, the, the staff going without the CIP and, and would recommend that, you know, that be addressed when we address the CRNR issue in six months. Anyway, it's been a long meeting, you know, I, I made it for a doctor's appointment at 11:30. I think my blood pressure will hopefully not be off the chart. Is, is Mike Carey still on the line?
Yes, I am.
Mike, do, how, how much tonnage does OCC take in when, when they're fully operable?
We were a little over 125 tons a month.
125 tons and, and we get credit for that.
Well, we, OCC reports the tonnage to you guys and however you claim credit is.
Yeah.
And just.
125 tons a month. So it behooves us as, you know, as, as we're going out in the world, you know, to let the world, let, let the coastal mates of residents know that that process is open again. I've been there a couple of times and there's a dearth of people using it. So any other directors' communications or comments? Not, I thank you very much for your diligent participation today and input and discussion and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.